This time I call to order the January 22nd, 2013 meeting of the Montrose Borough zoning hearing board. I'll ask the secretary to call rule.
Luther Giordano?
Here.
Carla Whitney?
Here.
Cynthia Goodman?
Here.
Richard Griffith?
Here.
Mary Andewith?
Here.
Okay, I'd like to note that there is a quorum present. Now I'd like to ask the secretary to read the minutes for the last meeting.
Can we do this on the left video?
No, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Zoning Hearing Board Minutes, December 18th, 2012, special hearing meeting. 6:00 PM, hearing called to order by Chairperson Richard Griffith. Role call: Luther Giordano, Carla Whitney, Cynthia Goodman, Richard Griffith. Chairman, Mary Andewith. All board members present at 6:00 PM, quorum in place. Board minutes of November 13th, 2012 were read aloud by the secretary. Mary Andewith made motion to accept minutes. Cynthia Goodman seconded, approved unanimously. Motion carried. Unfinished business: Motion made by Richard Griffith to approve the decision of Craig Stevens' hearing, to which there was an objection by Craig Stevens to the notice of the hearing and attorney Paul Litwin and Mr. Stevens. This is a continuation of the November 13th, 2012 hearing. Richard Griffith, Chairman, asked for a vote in order to approve the decision, and all the answers shown by the board, so approved. The Davis hearing, no news on the Davis' application. New business: Hearing on the Craig Stevens' application for variance. Motion was made by Richard Griffith to appoint attorney Paul Litwin to conduct the Stevens' hearing. Luther Giordano seconded, approved unanimously. Motion carried. Motion made to continue hearing for the Stevens' application of the variance to January 22nd, 2013, at 6:00 PM. Luther Giordano seconded, approved unanimously. Motion carried. Meeting was recessed at 6:10 PM and resumed at 6:20. The subject of videographing of meetings will be tabled until the next meeting. There is a new borough zoning ordinance, and each of the board members has a copy of the same. The next meeting is January 22nd, 2013, at 6:00 PM, and it will be the annual meeting and the Stevens' application hearing. Richard Griffith made motion to adjourn hearing at 6:25 PM. Seconded, approved unanimously. Motion carried. A tenant sheet is attached. Individuals listed as follows: R.K. Dimmick, Craig L. Stevens, Montrose, Beris Crocken, Brackney, Pennsylvania; J. Wilcox, Lathan, New York; Jerome Washo, Montrose, Pierre, Julian Skinner. Deceptively permitted.
Are there any additions or corrections? Okay, then the motion is order, is in order to approve. The minutes is read.
I'll make the motion.
So carried. This time I'm going to digress a little bit from our normal order of business and go over the rules of conduct for public meetings, which we need to adopt tonight. I will read them, so everybody here understands what they are. Public comment at public meetings shall be restricted to borough residents and/or borough taxpayers. Opportunity to speak at public meetings shall be limited to three, excuse me, five minutes per borough resident and/or borough taxpayer. We adopted those first two items at a previous meeting. The additional items cover videotaping of our meetings. Any video recording devices mounted on tripod shall be located in the back of the council meeting room behind the last row of chairs. Video recording devices which are shoulder-mounted or handheld by someone who is standing shall remain confined to the L-shaped area of the council meeting room, which begins just beyond the first window from the main entrance of the room and continues along behind the back of row of chairs and up along the aisle parallel to the rows of seats and ending parallel to the front row of chairs. Small handheld audio and camera equipment and other recording devices must be visible and will be allowed in the seating area. Any individual seated in the public area of video and audio recording must remain seated, any individual seated in the public area. In the event that any such individual wished to record from a standing position, it must move to the defined L-area in the back of the meeting room. No artificial lighting may be used for videotaping purposes. All audio recording devices must be visible. Audio recording devices may not approach or be set on the council's table. All recording devices shall be turned off prior to commencement of the meeting and at the adjournment of the meeting. All recording devices shall be powered by a battery or battery pack. Members of the public and/or press may not move chairs as configured by the Montrose Borough zoning hearing board prior to any meeting or during any meeting of the hearing board or any of its subdivisions. Any additions or questions to that? Motion is in order to...
The last subdivisions, we don't have.
Oh, okay, right.
We were capping with the borough.
Right.
Remain them.
A motion is in order then to approve.
Make the motion.
Or we have a second?
Okay.
So carried. At this point, we have an application from Mr. Craig Stevens for a variance, and I'm going to make the motion now that we appoint attorney Litwin to conduct the hearing on that variance. Do I have a second?
Okay.
So carried. Turn the reading over to Craig Litwin.
Thank you. We're here tonight on a continued meeting, our continued hearing. For those of you who are new here tonight, my name's Paul Litwin. I'm the solicitor for the zoning hearing board. I've been asked to act as a presiding officer for this proceeding. However, all the decisions will be made by the board. The variance request was filed by Craig Stevens, and it is to maintain a water distribution station at 12 Jessup Street, Montrose Borough, in a residential zone. The zoning hearing board has jurisdiction of request for variances pursuant to Section 909.15 of the Pennsylvania Municipalities Plan code and Section 112-45 of the zoning ordinance. I note that Marion O'Malley is here on behalf of the borough, and Clancy Boylan is here on behalf of the applicant. Clancy, how do you spell your last name?
B-O-Y-L-A-N.
Thank you. We will be taking notice of the transcripts of the last hearing. Anybody that has become a party at the last hearing is going to be a party here tonight. Is there anybody else that wishes to be a party tonight to this variance hearing that is not a party already? Okay. Just to go over some of the rules again, because this is a hearing and transcripts are being made, only one person may speak at a time. Clancy wasn't here when we had the first hearing, but I would note that Section 903 of the Pennsylvania Municipalities Plan code provides that a municipality may appoint three or five members to the zoning hearing board. I understand that the borough council appointed five members, however, Section 112-41B of the zoning ordinance designates a three-person board. This was disclosed at the first hearing, and there was no objection to a five-person board. Okay. As a preliminary matter, do we stipulate to notice? That proper notice was given to all parties to this hearing?
Yes.
Okay. So that would include advertising, and mailing, and posting, correct? Is that part of the stipulation?
Certainly.
That's correct?
Yes.
Okay. Where we left off, Mr. Boylan, was there was an issue with standing and whether your client had Mrs. Marta's or Ms. Marta's approval to bring in action for variance with respect to her property, and we continue this hearing so that your client would have an opportunity to obtain that consent. Do you have that consent?
I do. Sent an original letter signed by Dr. Monica Marta, authorizing Craig Stevens to ask for a variance for the water spigot.
Would you show that to council, please?
If I might ask, we are therefore not quite here from Mrs. Marta, Dr. Marta, at this time.
Not this time, no.
Any objection to its authenticity?
I have no objection to its authenticity. I do have a concern, however, that if she is not physically present, I don't have the opportunity to cross-examine her, obviously.
Okay, let's take a look at the rules quickly. 913.3. Appeals under Section 909, in the subsection for variance, may be filed with the board in writing by the landowner affected. Any officer or agency of the municipality or any person agreed. Request for variance under Section 910.2 and for special exception under 912.1 may be filed with the board by any landowner or any tenant with the permission of such landowner. So I guess the, I mean, is that needed here unless, well, is there an argument as to whether or not that document is a forgery?
No, I don't believe that it's a forgery.
Can anybody attest to her signature? Is there anybody here that's familiar with her signature? Did anybody observe her sign this document?
I mean, if there's no objection to forgery, is there any need to go through that?
It's the borough that would object.
And she had no objection.
Well, again, the problem is that if she's not here, I don't get the opportunity to cross-examine her, and as you have already read, the issue is whether or not Mr. Stevens is the tenant of Monica Marta. What I've read in terms of this authorization, there's no reference to him as a tenant or an agent. So with regard to the content of the authorization, obviously I have questions, and those would be what would be the subject for my cross-examination.
We do have a copy of the Pennsylvania American Water Bill showing that this is Craig Stevens' hydrant. Carry notification.
Typically, this would come up with respect to somebody having a sales agreement or something else where it is signed by the landowner that authorizes the party bringing the action to bring the action. In this case, it's a little bit different. May we see what would be a... Dear Chairman Griffith, and members, please permit this letter to serve as my general authorization to Mr. Craig Stevens with regard to the water spigot located on the property 12 Ridge Street, Montrose. In particular, I am hereby authorizing Mr. Stevens' access to the zoning hearing board for variance on January 22nd, 2013. Thank you in advance for your consideration. Any discussion by the board?
I have difficulties with this. I'm not sure of Mr. Boylan. Are you representing Mr. Stevens, Ms. Marta, or some other person? I'm a little bit confused.
On behalf of Mr. Stevens.
And he speaks absolutely in all matters for Ms. Marta.
Yes, in accordance with the letter. In this matter, that's what the letter authorizes in this.
Can he speak to issues such as the actual vesting of the mortgage, the provisions of the mortgage that her holder had? Can he speak to issues of whether there's a joint tenancy involved? Other persons may have some say as to what Ms. Marta can authorize on this property?
We're here for the variance. Do all these...
Excuse me, I asked a question. It seems a very straightforward question. Can he speak for those issues?
If you give me a chance to answer, what I'm saying is, do you have authority to speak to those issues?
Do you have knowledge to speak to them, too?
Didn't know it had to have authority on those issues. I thought we were here speaking about the variance.
The variance.
The variance on the hydrant. The question of a variance also involves the use of the property. If we don't know the vesting of the mortgage, the vesting of the deed, and the insurance involved, we can't really discuss the variance properly. Can we, sir?
I'll be honest with you, I don't know. I mean, I don't know why that wasn't part of the last meeting.
We, Mr. Litwin informed Mr. Stevens and Mr. Stevens' two attorneys that Ms. Marta's presence would be required. It's in the transcript that she would need to be here. I have a series of questions I'd like to ask, and quite frankly, none of one of you is competent to answer them for me, so that causes a difficulty for me.
I'll have to speak if I may. We have a copy of the previous transcript. I don't believe I heard those words. I heard we had to have an authorization from her. I didn't hear we had to have her in person, so I would have to, I would have to have that looked at.
We were told that we had to have a representative from her. A representative should be someone who can speak to issues as to the actual ownership of the property, what the provisions of the mortgage are, and what the provisions of the insurance on the property are. These are all issues that I consider to be somewhat important in this discussion.
Were these issues part of last week, or last meeting?
No, as a matter of fact, they weren't. Okay. So I'm bringing them up now.
Any board member have any other questions, and then we'll go back, and we'll take a few minutes and discuss this. Any other questions?
I would just like to reiterate what we did at the last hearing, or the last meeting. We opened the hearing. Borough had, did not have a council present. I made the motion that because the council wasn't present, that we continue the hearing. That was the extent of that hearing, so.
Should we talk about the hearing before that?
Yeah, I think they're referring to the previous hearing.
So two hearings ago, two meetings ago.
Okay.
I think this works.
Why don't you give us a few minutes, and we'll discuss this. Come back with a decision.
Thanks.
Why don't we mark these as...
Right. Exactly. Superior 3632, and a man. I should put up a few of those names when you go back on.
Okay, well, I think, why don't we make my statement, because you think you do, too? Otherwise, we could address it later. Okay, the zoning hearing board...
One moment.
I'm sorry.
One and two.
All set?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, sorry. The zoning hearing board met and deliberated with respect to the exhibits one and two, and we do find that they meet the requirements of the Municipalities Plan code allowing And I believe, in a variance case, the applicant goes first, so. Mr. Boylan?
Okay. In asking for the variance, I'm actually going to turn it over to Mr. Craig Stevens.
I just had a few quick questions. So we know Dr. Marta owns the property outright, pretty clear. There is no other tenant, and she has given me full authorization to speak on her behalf on any questions that you ask.
The deed is only in her name.
The deed is in her name with cash.
That was an issue I wish to clarify.
Thank you for asking, and we have an answer for you. The main concern was that, my feeling was, in asking for the variance, and then Dr. Marta giving me the authorization to speak with her, was a simple solution for this issue. That is the reason I'm here tonight, the second meeting after the previous meeting, where we have the decision that was brought down. So I would ask again, it's an information that I asked for. We're asking for the variance to allow us to continue using this spigot, which is non-commercial on the property. We, we're using it in a non-commercial way, and we'll continue to do that, and are interested in having all of this not be, have to continue further for the borough, the zoning hearing board, and for anybody on our side. Just as I stated before, and I will again today for the record, all I'm trying to do with this, with this spigot, is get clean water to people who need it. So that's my main focus here. I am very happy to answer any questions, but I will ask a question that I didn't get to ask last time. I'm looking at 112-50. Your...
This really isn't designed for you to be asking questions. You can offer your testimony. You have a standard in the Municipalities Plan code of what you need to establish to obtain a variance, so I'd suggest that you testify or present evidence as to those factors.
I believe most of it was put in, so I'll just reiterate what was put into the original, where the variance, where the request is...
But wait, if you're going to test, if you're going to make statements that you want us to receive as evidence, you need to be sworn, and you need to act as a witness, and your attorney needs to question you. Okay? So if you're done with your opening statement, and you're now in the mode of presenting evidence, then you need to go over there and be sworn in. While you're going through your things, just to remind you, we have taken notice of everything that's in the transcript, so everything that has transpired will be available to the board.
Right. Okay, so my statement was what I just made, and then, so that's what we're asking for, and if we're swearing in, that would be if I'm giving testimony for any thing I'm bringing up beyond what my opening statement was, so I'll probably get sworn in, because I have a couple of things that I need to...
Do you have questions?
Okay, slides here, and if you're going to, if I'm going to be cross-examined, I need to hear any...
Yes.
Mr. Boylan, we're very flexible with the rules of evidence. You weren't here at the first hearing. You may have looked at the transcripts, but we just, you know, make sure it's relevant, please, and try not to stray too far with hearsay, because we need some basis provided where you...
Mr. Stevens, would you raise your right hand, please? Can you not only swear, the testimony you may give, in best case, will be the truth, the whole truth, and I'll invoke the truth to help you out. Thank you.
Please state your name for the record.
Craig Litwin Stevens.
Do you know why we're here today?
Yes.
Now, Mr. Stevens, can you please tell the members of the board what you did to obtain this variance?
What I did to obtain the variance? Yes. Well, it was filed to ask for the variance, and then I received permission from the landowner to represent her in her stead, and also received a letter that you have from Pennsylvania American Water stating that I am the owner of that account and the hydrant was installed in my name, and with permission from the landowner, which is also available from Dr. Marta.
What purpose are you looking to use the spigot for?
Since it's in seption, and when it existed before at Lake Montrose, it was to provide clean water to those in need that had non-potable usable water, and it has been utilized for bringing that water to residents along Carter Road in the Dimmick area, including one of the recipients being the property owner.
Excuse me, I believe this was all covered in the original transcript. Was it not? The purpose of this board, this spigot, et cetera?
I'd have to look at the transcripts.
Okay. If it was a stipulator, too, I'd just like to move it forward. That's all.
Laying some foundation for it.
Yes, but we have a transcript that may have laid its foundation. If we keep laying foundation over foundation, we end up with the city of Troy.
Mr. Stevens, are you aware of this spigot? If it is granted to use, will it be detrimental to the public in any way?
I would only be able to speak for myself and the property owner, which is, it's not, it's on a private property that's well off the road, and when the truck and driver are there, it's parked completely off the road, turned off, and does not run on Sunday, so it wouldn't interfere with any church, and it's not done any time after dark, either before, in the morning, or any afternoon, to comply and keep it safe and from interfering with anybody else's activities in the area.
Are you changing the land in any way?
Well, all that was, was an installation of the meter and the pit and the protective barriers to keep the hydrant from being bumped into.
Russ?
No, Russ.
No, Russ. Name, board members?
Yes, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
You said you're speaking on behalf of Dr. Marta. How does the lack of this variance prevent her from carrying out her dental practice?
Her dental practice?
Yes.
I don't know that it affects her dental practice directly, but it is simply a larger...
That's all I needed. Thank you, sir. In what way does it render the property unusable if she doesn't receive the variance?
Unusable?
Yes.
I would state that without this larger volume spigot, which is what it is, there was a three-quarter inch already available there, this is a two-inch. She, the owner of the property, has no access to clean water after hours or at her home, so I would say that more...
That makes the property unusable by her.
I would say it makes her unable to live her life at her house, so that's not a private, but as far as the property itself, it was limited, the three-quarter inch spigot that was there was limited in size to be able to get the water available.
So she lives on the property? This property is where the spigot is, where she lives?
She lives elsewhere, but utilizes the property on a weekly basis for her practice.
But I guess I don't understand how that can affect where she actually lives. You know, this property, I don't quite understand. I mean, she can get water somewhere else.
Can't?
So I'm not sure of what--
That's the statement you're making, but that's not the case. We had it before at the, at the Lake Montrose area. That's where Pennsylvania American Water was supplying--
Why did they move it from Lake Montrose to--
Two reasons. It was December when they started that. They had to thread the meter on, which is now buried on the property. They had to thread it on, on an on-call basis. It was on a very bad curve there. Pennsylvania American Water themselves, it was a liability on that. That was much more dangerous there to have trucks pulling out on that bowling curve. That was on their side than anybody else's. They looked for somebody that had a direct bearing on this, which would be, because that is a recipient and the property owner of the private property. And all they looked at it as is that the three-quarter inch would have taken hours to fill up a 500-gallon container, the larger diameter in their thought. And just so the board knows, that was installed without one penny. It was, it was a custom installation. They not only did the roadwork and the installation of the meter pit, which I own past it, the pipes themselves, so it's my property they're considering, but it was done without any dollars on their part as far as the installation.
So another question, you're saying that this will enable her to have water, clean water? So the water's only be sent to her then?
No, it is going to other--
And supply for other people?
She's the main, she's, the property owner is one of the main recipients. It has been going to neighbors there as needed. There was more before, but now there's a few less. But it is mainly available for the property owner and their, and her neighbors.
I guess I agree with Louisa. I don't know how you're proving that this fits, this makes her land unusable, which was what Louisa's original question was. How does it make her land in the borough unusable?
I would have to turn it the other way. What, it's a private, it's a private property with a spigot on it. All it is is a larger diameter spigot. The water is non-commercial. I've also read it, but it's fitting more of a private property issue of where that water goes. And I'll have Pennsylvania speak, where can water speak in the future if we need to ask. But their, their thought is, this is simply, what is done with that water after it comes out of that spigot is the property owner's. It should be the same as if any of us had water at our homes and wanted to carry it to another location. So that, that really is the issue as far as I'm concerned. On the variance, it's simply allowing her to continue the free access and use of the larger diameter so that it can be filled faster, less time. If it was a three-quarter inch, which she could legally use that for right now, as far as we can see, it's the one that's attached to the house, it would take literally two hours to fill up a container. So that's what we're asking the variance for, is to not, is to allow the continued use of the larger to be in and out in twenty minutes instead of a two-hour fill-up each time, which would be much longer in the neighborhood and I believe would be more noticeable and there might be more likelihood of people objecting to it.
Okay, could we go through the record for one second? Somebody just set up a video camera in the back corner of the room. Sir, would you mind moving that back behind the chairs or to the other side of the--
It's a sign in.
And we also have a sign-in sheet for, we went over this earlier, but you can't wait. So you can sign in and just move that over. Back on the record. Any other questions from the board members? Do any of the board's questions, was it additional questions from either of you?
Just two, three of our questions. Did you say that Dr. Marta has no other way of getting the water?
There is currently no other available high-volume water source for herself or any of the other recipients.
Are you aware how big Dr. Marta's tank is at her home?
It's a 3,000-gallon water tank.
And do the--
No questions?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I think I understand from your testimony that it was Pennsylvania American Water Company that suggested this site. Is that correct? Because you're saying that they didn't like you filling there?
The request was made for another location from Pennsylvania American Water.
They requested that you find another location?
We asked them, we said it was dangerous and it was causing everybody problems, including the workers at the location because of going out in freezing cold. They asked to find, if we found another property. It was brought up from the property owner that was a recipient, that they could make theirs available. And that, that's how that came about, where it went to. And it was, for Pennsylvania American Water, it was important that that was also a person that was on--
Did they suggest any other sites that may be available?
They had none available. I checked personally, quite a few of us checked all over for--
Bridgewater Township included?
I don't know about Bridgewater. Along the road there are businesses too. It was about a week or week and a half that was asked all over and the one location was made available and that was one of the recipients of Dr. Marta's property.
Thank you. Okay. Did those questions cause any other major council--
Not really.
Okay. Anybody that became a party to this proceeding back in November, any questions of this witness? Were you a party, sir?
Yes, yes.
First, would you say your name, please?
Sure, Rex Maxi. So I'm very curious, if this water is so important to Ms. Marta and her survival at her home, why has she been unable to attend any of three meetings? Seems to me if I was concerned about getting clean water at my home, and this is an important meeting, it seems I would be in attendance. Is there any explanation for that?
I think she became concerned when I came, it was installed in my name with her permission. When I came to the original meeting of the Montrose Borough on February 6th and the entire borough walked out on us, she got very concerned that it might cause repercussions to her business, as it looks like it is. And I'm gonna say that on record. It looks like this is gonna cause problems for her business or potentially could. And I'm, none of us were understanding why going from a three-quarter inch spigot to a two-inch for higher volume would cause anybody to have concern about the use of the property as long as it wasn't commercial and fit the requirement. So that was, that's, that was the reason, I would say, is she's felt, the reason she had mentioned it is expressed to me, fear of reprisal. And it looks like that has happened. You know from on record before, we not only had a person parked in front of the hydrant on purpose within inches, the officer is here that was present, we also had a physical assault of our driver. We were then told because of those two incidences that it was somehow our fault for putting the spigot in, that was a problem. I don't understand that. I would look at us as the victim. A person parked a vehicle illegally on private property in front of the hydrant to block it from being used. And then a person came onto the property while the driver was there and physically assaulted them. That is also on record from the Montrose Police. So I would, I would care to ask the zoning hearing board and the community here personally, what was going on on that property that was so huge of a thing that somebody actually had to block the use or physically assault the driver?
Excuse me, Mr. Stevens.
Yes.
That's a little bit beyond our purview.
His question I'm asking--
Yeah, it's beyond our purview to be able to find out why things--
Correct.
We don't, we don't really control the borough. We're just an adjudicating body for a specific area, which is zoning regulations.
And he asked a specific question on why Monica Marta would not be here?
Yes.
I don't think she feels safe in, in representing this because already it's proven that there are people that are very upset about it and they're unwilling to act out physically. So if I was a woman that owned that property, I don't think I would--
Then you addressed the question of the board to answer and the hypothetical. And we're not really prepared or capable answering that question.
I'm sorry, he asked a direct question. I was just answering what the thought process was.
But you answered any question on us.
No problem. I just, oh, I was just trying to make a statement. I'm sorry to make any of the questions.
I believe, one more question. I believe that it's normal operating procedure to ask for variance before you make an installation of something. Am I incorrect about that? So I would wonder why you wouldn't--
Correct. Yeah.
I would wonder why you wouldn't have requested a variance before you went to all the trouble to install the meter.
Good question. The problem that I have with that question is Pennsylvania American Water installed it in full view of the entire neighborhood, cut through the road, installed this two-inch hydrant. Not one question was asked of anybody. They had approval from the owner. They had the, they had the water authority installing it. The roads person, as far as I'm consumed, was present. The truck was sitting there the entire time and Pennsylvania American Water said that that, the, the Montrose roads person was there. So there's the issue is, variance, there was, there was nothing brought up. And then also, Dr. Marta, and I'm speaking for on this, is wondering why it was installed on January 26th. You have the letter. The first citation was on March 26th. That would be full sixty days later. Did it take that long for anybody, my concern, to figure out that there might have been a problem with this when it was installed in full view of the entire neighborhood, the Montrose Borough roads person, and with the authority and installation by the Pennsylvania American Water, which is the authority? That's our question here.
I can speak to that.
Go ahead.
I can speak to that. My mother, who lives right across the road from that directly, was in Florida at the time. So she wasn't there to observe it. And the house to her right, also directly across from it, was unoccupied. So that might explain why two people in full view--
Sir, if you'd like to offer testimony, you can do that, but not, not at this time, okay?
Yep.
So we'll start that.
General--
And you were a party last time too, sir, right?
Yes, sir. First name's Joel, last name's Maxi. It's, my, my one comment--
Again, if you're gonna testify--
Oh, question.
You can do that later.
Why, why, okay. Both the, both Environmental Protection Agency, both of the state and federal government deem the water usable in these areas. I believe that's to be true.
I have, I have information with me that counters that, but--
Well, that's irrelevant because they're the, they're the defining body.
I have their own, their own documents, sir, that were sent after that announcement was made that the water in the area, including the house in question, had problems with it even after that announcement was made.
Okay, but why don't we just, with respect to relevancy--
Can, can--
Just one second. I just want to explain because you're not represented, sir. The issue before the board is really with respect to this parcel. It doesn't have anything to do with--
You're exactly right.
What's going on in the brain trim or--
You're exactly right. And I apologize because--
Wait, wait, wait.
I'm sorry.
He's speaking. Continue.
I'm going to.
Okay, so the questions to be relevant need to pertain to this particular parcel.
You're, I apologize, and you're exactly correct because a lot of us, we said here has no bearing on variance. Absolutely, most of it, no. Thank you.
Any other questions of this witness? From either counsel?
No.
Next witness, sir.
I believe Mr. Stevens is the only witness--
Okay. Any witnesses?
No.
Okay. Argument?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Boylan, would you have an argument you'd like to make? Oh, I'm sorry, wait, before we do that. Parties, any parties wish to testify? This is gonna conclude all of the testimony that we're receiving tonight. So this is your chance to, if you want to put something on the record, this is your opportunity to do that. Just please keep in mind it has to do with this particular site. All those other issues are important to people for different issues, but not to us for this issue. Okay?
May I go?
Yes.
Do you have to get someone in?
Yeah, please.
Mr. Maxi, would you raise your right hand, please? Do you solemnly swear the testimony you will give in this case will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and help you God. Thank you.
I just, and I, I don't suspect I can ask a question, but my main concern, I don't want to beat the dead horse, but I certainly have sympathy if someone has bad water. I think everybody here does. But most of what we've spoken about here, or what has been discussed, really has no bearing on the variance, on what a variance is about. You've got one truck now coming up. Um, you know, my mother doesn't like seeing that out there. I don't live there anymore, of course, and so on. But I would believe a decision by the board to allow this to go through, number one, would be wrong. Number two, there would be no guarantee what would happen after that. The EPA, as I stated, the EPA, he may have other documents. I would assume if the EPA had come up with something that was detrimental to their original findings, it would have been plastered all over the news media. But that's neither here nor there. This woman, a floodgate, now you've got one truck and it'll be discretion of these people here to determine who's got bad water. Everybody and their brother will sign up and say, geez, I think my water's not quite the same, or I don't like my water. And the next thing you know, you've got ten trucks lined up outside. There's gonna be no way, I believe, that the borough's gonna be able to stop that as long as the truck doesn't weigh any more than a certain few pounds. The next thing you know, in residential area, you've got trucks lined up. It really is gonna be a sad situation to let it go down this road. I think there's plenty more opportunity to put it in another place. If it had been done correctly, you guys wouldn't be in this spot because if the person, who I believe was quite well-educated, would have come, as he should have, and come to the borough and said, this is what I'd like to do, those were just excuses, as far as I'm concerned, about why he did what he did, but that's neither here nor there at this point. I think it's a wrong road to go down and I would ask you that you don't bring up grant variance because it's not, he hasn't met the requirements for a variance. That's all I got.
Can I ask you--
Of this, of this witness?
Yes.
Yes.
Just to put it on record. Can you say where you live?
I live outside of town, Fairdale.
Can you say your address though?
Yeah, 1393 Fairdale Road, Montrose.
Okay.
That was easy.
I saw a head up in the back. Are you a party, sir?
Does that mean I'm adjacent to the property? I don't know what that means. I've been here.
You're an adjacent property owner, sir?
Yes, sir.
Why don't you fill out one of these party sheets and let counsel question you if they wish?
Sure. May I sit here?
While he's doing that, he's an adjacent property owner. Is there any objection to this standing to testify for this party?
No.
You are we sworn in?
And who are you?
Uh, Dr. Maxi.
Mr. Maxi, would you solemnly swear the testimony you will give in this case will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and help you God.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, right. We saw the installation going on and because it was Pennsylvania American Water, there was no, it looked very official. You know, there was trucks there and so as an adjacent property owner, we live directly, if you're staring at, if you're looking at the building, we live right next door. And we also have a property on Justin Street and two properties on Justin Street as a matter of fact. So regarding that, nothing looked suspicious. I guess in my heart of hearts, I really don't have, I'm not really crazy about, one way or another, about a truck pulling up and getting water out of this spigot. But, but I strongly believe in the fact that it's important that people follow regulations. We have a business in town and our business grew and we were concerned about our business being commercial and, and so we moved. We bought it, or we're renting commercial space in the borough Montrose, out of respect for the community, out of respect for the neighborhood, because it's a residential neighborhood. And it, it does concern me, I mean, Dr. Marta has a great business. She's there one day a week. As a matter of fact, there's no, there's no traffic because she's only there one day a week. With respect to her business being jeopardized by this, I'm not sure how that works because she's only there one day a week. So it really, we're, we're not seeing a major impact with this. There's the same amount of cars. As a matter of fact, we off, we called Dr. Marta to buy that building. It would suit our business quite well. It's spot-zoned, I believe, for a single business. That, so that's one issue. And, and the community likes it. It works. There's a sign up front. It's a little non-residential, but that's fine. But, but I think it's important that the borough and the, and the zoning retains this charm that Montrose has and with respect to its regulations. They're in place for a reason and they should be followed. Whether this, whether or not things went by over sixty days or thirty days, the important thing is that the regulations are followed. Secondly, the, the idea that this is not a commercial practice concerns me. I think I agree with Mr. Maxi that if this is approved and because there are no, because it's so kind of foggy to me, and I, I'm in environmental business, I understand what commercial distribution of water means. I believe, and I don't want to see somebody lose a job. I don't want to see, I don't, it's not that I don't want to see somebody get good water, but I have a lot of respect for this town and I think it's important that it retains-- but I, I have a lot of respect for this town and I think it's important that it retains its, its charm. And this could be a tipping point with respect to abiding by its rules that we need to respect and opening this box for other folks to say, hey, this guy did it, let's say not. You know, why can't I? Why can't I stay in the building out of his head? I moved. I, I got concerned about the regulations of this town. I respect them. Um, I, I don't want this to come across as someone that doesn't want someone to get what they deserve, or someone that doesn't want someone to get water or have a job. But this town is wonderful. And it's wonderful because Ellie McCage has a beautiful home there and, and the Maxi's mom has a beautiful home there and we have a beautiful home. And that's why we're there. Not to cross that line over into this, well, let's turn this commercial this time. That's it. Any questions? Frank the counsel?
Uh, yes. Have you seen this spigot?
Absolutely, yeah.
Can you describe, describe it?
Yeah, it's a, it's a red pipe coming out of the ground with a lock on it. Um, there's two, I think they're called, whatever, they are to protect it from getting run into. Um, and it's in the parking lot of Dr. Marta's dental office.
Is it big?
How do you define big?
Like how high the ground is?
Um, I don't know, 24 to 30 inches.
Has the property, any of the properties around us been destroyed because of this spigot?
Um, I don't think there's a relationship with destroyed.
Had any of the properties been damaged?
How do you, I don't know. What are you asking?
Have any of the properties since this spigot has been changed?
Damaged, like has a truck drive into my front yard yet?
Has there been any damage to any of the properties surrounding this spigot?
I, that's, that wasn't, the, the answer to your question is, I'm not certain. I, I mean, a truck, a truck could have driven, I'll answer in the same way you're questioning. A truck could have driven through my yard, I don't know, but I doubt it. My concern is, I believe, I truly believe that it's a commercial, if not industrial practice by definition, in what I know about environmental practices with water distribution. Most water distribution are at least commercial, if not industrial. And I, I did a little research across the country and you could simply Google water distribution and most things fall, most stuff that came up was a commercial practice. Whether you call it, um, someone donating money or whatever, I, I, I'm just, I'm speaking on behalf of this, this, this neighborhood, that I think it's important that they retain the charm of Montrose. And that's, and that's all.
Do you agree that water's a necessary part of life?
Well, of course I do. And, and I drink about eight quarts a day, but I think the same question that was thrown at Mr. Maxi, do you live here? You know what? If I lived like six miles from here, maybe I'd dig another well. I don't know. I, or, or there's all these other people. I, it's not about that for me. It's about the charm of Montrose.
And you realize that if this variance is granted, this is only to this specific spigot?
No, I don't. Meaning, I don't know if it, if it's only this truck. I don't know that.
Okay.
I, that, I don't think that's been defined. I, I, because I was at a hearing, or whatever it was, a meeting here a couple times ago and there was, I guess I'm not too clear, but a contribution towards this? And if, I, I think that's how this is funded? I'm not certain. So I'm, I'm unclear on how this is being funded. I know there's a gentleman that makes money driving the truck and I apologize for that. I, I, I don't want anybody to be out of work. I'm speaking on behalf of the charm of Montrose. And, and I think it's important to retain that and, and its regulations. Any questions? Any questions? No questions.
I'd like to ask a question. What you're speaking to is the character of that neighborhood.
Mm-hmm.
I just want to clarify that for myself. You're saying that you feel this changes the character or diminishes or something that, that neighborhood?
I, I don't want to disrespect anyone and use the word diminish. I want to retain the charm of our neighborhood and this could, because I'm not clear on the scope of this commercial activity, which I define it that way, I do. I'll say that for the record. I'm not sure where this will lead to.
But you're basically considered this to be a commercial activity as one of the people living in that neighborhood?
If you're in the water distribution business, I think it is. I, I'm, sorry, I, I really do. Any other questions? Because it's not only for the homeowner, it's for other people, so. Did that question cause any further questions?
Uh, no.
Thank you. Thank you. Closing argument?
Who goes first? I'm not sure. You can go first. Okay. Uh, I think we stated our case that a variance is necessary. Water is, with the exception of air we breathe, the most essential element of our existence. And we've heard testimony today that the property owner can only get her water from this spigot. She can't get it from anywhere else. If she can't get water, if this variance isn't granted, I believe that is a classical definition of an unnecessary hardship. And we've also heard testimony, excuse me, we've heard no testimony that she can get water from anywhere else. The only testimony on this, in this record is that her water comes from that spigot. That's the only place she can get it. Furthermore, we've heard testimony that this spigot has in no way materially altered or been detrimental to the public welfare of Montrose. It hasn't injured the public. I mean, we just heard testimony about the charm of Montrose, but this is a spigot that's 30 inches off the ground. It's not big. It hasn't harmed anyone. No trucks have driven over anybody's land. It seems to me that the case is simple. She needs water. We all need water to survive. She's not asking for a lot. She's asking for a variance to supply water to her home for her to use, for her to drink, for her to bathe. And a variance will not alter this town, it will not alter the surrounding properties, it hasn't decreased anybody's home value. Because as a result, this variance should be granted.
Thank you. With regard to this matter, um, I will note that, um, to the extent that this matter comes before the court of the state or comes before the panel, um, the borough was somewhat disadvantaged by the fact that this, um, uh, this variance request is nothing more than a numbered paragraph in, uh, in what I would call a pleading that was filed, uh, back in September of 2012, um, just asking that, uh, um, that a variance for the subject hydrant build site, um, be granted to Mr. Stevens, not to Ms. Marta, as was just indicated, but to Mr. Stevens. Mr. Stevens is the one here today for this evening requesting, uh, this variance. Um, so the borough came in tonight not knowing what, uh, section of the zoning ordinance they intended to attack with regard to this, without knowing, um, the specifics of, of what their request for a variance was based on. Um, my understanding of Pennsylvania case law is that variances get, uh, granted only very sparingly. And, uh, the variance requirements are quite specific. There are five of them. The first one, uh, requires that, uh, Mr. Stevens, uh, established that there is unique physical circumstance or conditions, including irregularities, narrowness, shall, shallowness, et cetera, um, of this property, uh, that prevents the property owner from using it in any other manner. No testimony's been offered whatsoever from any source with regard to, um, the particular physical attributes of this particular property. So Mr. Stevens has failed to meet even the initial requirement. Uh, going further, the second requirement is that there be evidence and testimony to establish that there is no possibility that this property can be used, um, by means of conforming development without the issuance of a variance. That is not the case. We know from the testimony that's been offered from several witnesses that Dr. Marta is using this property and she is using it functionally as a business and she has been doing so for quite some time. So Mr. Stevens cannot meet the requirement of number two. The third requirement is that there be established and, uh, that there was an unnecessary hardship, um, or that an unnecessary hardship, um, would be created by not granting, or that he did not, let me start again, that the unnecessary hardship of this situation was not created by the applicant. Well, to the extent that there may be a hardship here, it was indeed created by Mr. Stevens. He's here before the panel asking that, um, that he be allowed to use this spigot. However, he is the one who has placed himself in a situation where he now has to come before the board, indicating that he has already gone ahead and taken these actions without taking the proper prior steps as he was required to do under Montrose, um, Montrose Borough zoning requirements. So he cannot meet the requirement of number three. Number four, uh, requires that a variance, uh, that there be proof that the variance will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. Um, with regard to the testimony offered by Mr. Washo, I don't think it could be said any more eloquently than he said it. Clearly, a commercial, uh, commercial activity in this residence will affect, uh, the essential character of it. And there was no testimony offered contradictory to that. Finally, um, the requirement, the requirement is that a minimum variance be the least possible modification of the existing zone. Well, there is absolutely nothing that's been offered here before, before the panel that would suggest that a variance is appropriate to any degree. Um, the testimony is clearly deficient under these circumstances and the borough would ask the panel to dismiss or refuse the request for a variance.
Okay. Uh, we may reach a decision tonight. I'm sure everyone had a written decision tonight.
I just want to address this, um, about bringing this variance. Why wasn't it sought? Why, why, I mean, it's like the barn door is open after, you should have closed it. Why wait and then find out that you need a variance? There isn't any place that you can live today where you don't have, when you're going to do something in a neighborhood, or you even need a variance for a dog fence? So why, why didn't you apply for that before you let all this happen? I was on the planning commission 10, 15 years ago. Nothing, we didn't let anything get.
Well, I mean.
I mean, just that, that if it should have been done, we wouldn't be sitting here tonight if that variance had been requested. A call to the borough secretary would have been all that had, could have been done.
Well, fortunately, it is, but that has no bearing on. We're here today for the variance. We appreciate you guys. About to go deliberate and we look forward to your decision.
Thank you.
After you've made an amendment?
Thank you, sir.
Can you approach the chair? Are we not, we don't have time, so. Can you hear us somewhere near?
No.
No, I can't hear you clearly.
I don't think so.
Okay.
Motion is in order now to either deny or allow the application for a permit. Do I have a motion?
Uh, I make a motion to deny the application for variance.
Okay. Any other motions? Okay, a vote is in order by a show of hands. All in favor of denying the application, raise your hand. So carried.
Yeah, the record will reflect it as unanimous. Uh, we will have a decision within 45 days and, uh, that is the date. When that decision is issued, that's the date the trigger's hit. So you have 30 days from then. Okay? Thank you. We still have more meetings to, not with you guys, but others.
Just starting normal business.
I wonder if, um, how are the issues being handled?
Sure.
Have you had a good part to that? Um, the property located in, I don't know.
You were off the record.
Okay. Um, is now underneath five months' notice as an independent site for community, community sector. So it's one year lease, so we anticipate.